Good evening, everyone. It is 7 o'clock PM, and I hereby call to order the March 2018 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will begin with Village Clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
It says upcoming events, but recent event would be the elections, and the results will come through later on during the meeting. Upcoming events, which I imagine Deputy Mayor or Major may be touching upon later, is the annual children's egg hunt for Saturday, March 31st. So, should read more details. Our report: 238 trash tags have been sold this past month. Two payrolls were processed. Deputy Clerk attended one ZBA meeting. This meeting consisted of two public hearings for variances which were recently issued by the ZBA. Some additional notes and information that as the present Village Clerk, it's my professional responsibility to glorify the reports, but then in particular activity or activities that I undertake while maintaining a village clerk's position. Been approached by individuals who sought my interest level in joining the Tivoli Free Library Board. I've decided I would like to join their board, and I intend to confirm my level of interest and accept my nomination by joining them at their meeting, which is next week, Wednesday, March 28th. Along with the library, I have had much and many people, much interest from the Tivoli Fire Department. They've approached me quite a bit for years. I have submitted my application to become an associate member to the Fire Department. I intend to pursue personal membership with them, and I'm pleased to be potentially joining both of the final organizations I just mentioned. I look forward to personally contributing to them both. And just a few more things to keep me busy, along with putting other future plans into motion and participating in my other personal pursuits. So, that said, I think that's about enough.
All right. Well, thank you for informing us as you're obligated to do, and congratulations on being solicited by other entities. And I guess we'll have to share your willingness to serve your community with these other organizations. So, if you think you can juggle it all, I'm all in favor of it.
Yep. Hey, she's the one who makes it happen.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two February 21 regular meeting minutes, February 21 public hearing minutes, and March 14 workshop minutes. And of course, the public hearing minutes were on the recently passed Hen Law. I will certainly praise our village clerk for keeping minutes of a large crowd of passionate statements. And I don't envy you that task, but you always do it well, so thank you. Trustees, we'll approve these altogether. Because we are missing two trustees, there's going to be an awful lot of first and seconding back and forth between the two that remain. So, is there a motion to approve all sets of minutes?
So moved.
You're going to do that to me all night? All right. So, Schneider followed by Major.
All right. So, you're up next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to a Treasurers' Report. This month, out of the general fund, we spent $17,652.55. Out of the water fund, the F Fund, we spent $5,392.97. And out of the G Fund, the Sewer Fund, Good evening. For a grand total of $29,608.7. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurers' Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To pay the bills. Moving on to a zoning report. What would you like to take over for Trustee Azra, to talk here?
Who gets to it first?
Who gets to it first? Schneider.
All right. So, activities for the Code Enforcement Department for the month of February. Let's see. I'll read your march. Two building permits were reviewed and issued. One building inspection was performed. Zero complaints submitted and investigated. Fourteen zoning violations were issued for failure to remove garbage cans from the sidewalks. Two court hearings were held. Four municipal searches were requested and completed, and zero fire inspections were scheduled.
Thank you, Trustee Schneider. Thank you to our Building Inspector, John Fenton.
Can I interrupt for just one brief moment? I do apologize if I've been single you out. I know that you came in. Could you do us a favor if you sign in? And there is an agenda here. Bill, yeah. Thank you.
All right. This is zoning report. All right. Now, we have public comment on agenda items only, because it's not going to be about Amtrak. We'll get to that later. So, but if you want to say anything about our proposed budget modifications for the village election results, we're happy to hear from you at this time. All right. So, trustees, we went over the budget modifications in the workshop. Again, we have two months left in our fiscal year, and we're doing pretty well. We're on track in just moving monies from one line to another to be clear about where the spending is happening. So, with that said, I want to ask for a motion to pass these budget modifications. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our very short agenda this month. Second item, village election results. I'd like to turn it back to Clerk Bruno, who is also our Elections Officer for those results.
Yes, we had two inspectors yesterday from noon to nine at the Tivoli Firehouse. We had Judy Scott and Cindy Hookunda. Out of our total eligible voters, we had 7%. So, we had 59 total votes. 57 votes went to Emily Major. 56 went to Jeanne and Schneider. There were zero absentee ballots. There was a write-in for Andrea Rhodes, a write-in for Melba Rhodes, and then one ballot was actually disqualified due to factually debase.
Thank you.
So, congratulations to you all here.
Congratulations and thank you for your willingness to serve. Two more ears. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you to everyone who came out to vote. Again, 7% is... We'd like to see better than that. To have 59 people come out when over 400 people in this village are eligible to vote. Maybe everyone's just that happy with the job that is being done. We hope that's the case. But even so, it really means so much to the electeds to have that support, even if they're running unopposed. So, we hope people will continue to come out and vote, and maybe in greater numbers in the future. And again, congratulations to my colleagues here. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, April 18th, at 7:00 PM. That will also be the annual Village of Tivoli reorganizational meeting. That's when we do our citizen awards. I will deliver the State of the Village address. All the newly elected and appointed officers will take their oath to office. And there'll be some cake and refreshments. So, please come out for that. April 18th, here at the Historic Oss de Peister Hall. And of course, we have our regular workshop the preceding week on April 11th at 7:00 PM. I think we can move pretty quickly through the trustee reports. We have a water report. Anyone want to do that? Okay. I'll do the water report. So, this month, all the wells were doing fine. And while we did have a water main break last Friday, that falls outside of this report, so we don't have that. That'll be on next month's. And our monthly microbiological sample results taken from two locations in the village came back without any violations. Trustee Schneider with Justice Court Report.
Absolutely. So, Village Justice Court Report for the month of February. Total of 11 charges were received... Excuse me. A total of 15 were received. 21 were disposed. $1,459 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. It's real sweet.
All right. Thank you. I see in the court report a number of overnight parking tickets. Of course, that continues until April 1st. Supposedly, there's some snow coming any minute. I don't know. But our snow ordinance is still in effect until April 1st. No overnight parking. I also do see here an unreasonable noise ticket conviction and a fine issued in the amount of $200. All right. So, let's see. Moving on. Trustee Murphy is not here, but he is, once again, collecting interest on the Tivoli Children's Rec Camp. We brought that back last summer. It was robust. We had a great group of kids and some great counselors. And we want to keep that growing and going. So, if you have any children in your life between five and 12, contact Trustee Murphy. You can find his email on the village website and let him know that you're interested. We'll probably get to formal registration in June. But just to kind of take a pulse of how much interest there is so we can start planning on the counselors we need, et cetera, please let us know. Deputy Mayor or Major?
Well, along with all of the usual fabulous events in the local hardware weekly, this Saturday is the last to sign up for the annual talent show, which is going to be taking place on Friday, April 6th, at Sanctuary at Murray's at 6:30 PM. So, if you have a rare and wondrous talent, as so many Tivolis do, perhaps you would like to share it. Also, the library is sponsoring an event on April 14th. You may or may not know this, but April 14th is International Punchhooking Day.
What is punchhooking?
Well, I'm not sure exactly. I think it's what the hooks and needles, yarns and thread people are doing on Thursday. Some of them make rugs, and it involves punching and worsted yarn. And so, there's going to be instruction. If you are a punchhooking enthusiast, you can bring your supplies and join in the fun. Or, between 10 and 3, the hooks and needles, yarns and thread folks will be offering instruction in said arts. Mark your calendars. April 20th is the Community Potluck Bar and Center for Super Contagion Village of Tivoli Spring Potluck Supper upstairs here, 6 to 8:00 PM. And looking a bit farther ahead, Saturday, April 21st, is going to be the Sheep and Wool Showcase at Claremont. So, and that is pretty slow as we limp through the last of the winter in terms of history and outdoorsy, and the ticks are still there. So, be careful. And come out on the 31st for the annual egg hunt here, between here and the firehouse. Little kids here, bigger kids at the firehouse, between 2 and 3. And it's going to be, you know, face paintings, eggs, bunnies. Looks fabulous.
Candy.
Candy. Lots and lots of candy.
All right.
So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to let everyone know that we still have four plots available in the Tivoli Community Garden. We are all getting a late start this year. I was with the Green Committee yesterday, and I don't think anyone's even gotten in their plot yet. But we have four left. If you're interested, you must be a Tivoli resident, and you can send an email to tivolicommitегarden@gmail.com. It's $30 for the season. That gets you an 8-by-12 plot. And we hope the weather improves, and we can get in there. I'm waiting myself. So, four plots left. Come get them. With all that said, and that's got to be the fastest we've gone through that.
Mason's breakfast.
When?
Sunday.
This Sunday?
This Sunday.
Time?
Time. 8 to noon.
8 to noon.
Yeah.
But I'll tell you, if you get there at 11:45, you might be out of work.
You might be out of work.
It happened to me.
But it is the best breakfast around.
Yep. $8 all you can eat this Sunday at the Masonic Lodge down here on North Row. With that said, we would now like to open the meeting to public comment on any topic you have our attention. And if you could please just state your name for the record as you speak, we'd appreciate it. Yes, sir?
I have a whole little essay here I'd like to read to you.
There you go.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Chordy, and I am here tonight to address the gating and fencing proposal by Amtrak that will close the Access Road that runs along the west side of the railroad tracks from Tivoli to Chevy. I have been a Tivoli resident all my life, and in my short 33 years on this earth and in this village, there has always been a constant fear that's our love and access to the Hudson River. This small village was built around the river. It is part of our local heritage. As proposed, Amtrak is trying to gate and fence every railroad crossing from Ryan Cliff to Stuyvesant. Simply put, we as a community cannot allow this to happen. As requested at another town meeting and using that as guideline to present to you, I personally would like to request that Amtrak make a formal presentation to the Village of Tivoli and its residents, giving specific details of its intentions. Yes, a 14-page proposal was given, but we the people feel it was blurry, confusing, and the impacts were trivialized. It is pretty clear that Amtrak does not want public comment or discussion and just wanted to fly this under the radar. Public comment ends in eight days, and not half of the village residents have been made aware of this even happening. Next, I would like to note that the 15-day public comment period was insufficient. As of now, comments are due March 29th, 2018, at 4:00 PM. Commenting just opened on March 14th, 2018. I would like to request a 30-day public comment period only after the presentation of the proposed gates and fences are presented to the village board. Attached in this envelope are 107 physical signatures that was located at Northern Duchess Archery in Redham. We are required those in seven days. Not trying to knock the voting system around here, but you guys struggle to get 50, you know, people to come one day. Those are physical signatures. That local business has been a 20-year establishment located in the town of Redham. They would suffer greatly from the conservational impacts imposed by the hindering of our tidal shoreline. Also in this envelope are 1,272 signatures. That totals 1,379 combined that are opposed to the gating and fencing along the Access Road on the west side of the tracks. Above, you heard me mention the words "conservational impacts." Hunting, fishing, ecological. That's just a few. Every year, the herring and strider fishing run detracts thousands to our shorelines between April and June. Tourists come and spend money in our village. They buy their tackle from Northern Duchess Archery, food from Murray's and Broadway, and help with the conservation of fish, waterfowl, and so on. We asked Mayor Griffith to write to Matthew Margiaglio, the Coastal Resource Specialist at the Office of Planning and Development. We ask for our above requests, join our voice in the opposition of the gates and fences. Clearly, the people you represent are highly opposed to this proposal going through. We hope that you, our elected officials, will help us in this fight. Contact your superiors to help. County executives, district assemblymen, and so on up the line until we reach the future Governor Mark Mollinare. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And can you give a copy of that to our clerk, your statement? We'd like to...
This is your statement.
Great. We'd like to include that in the record. And I have a... We've received correspondence from Joe Varlaro, who couldn't be here tonight, but I will be reading his letter. But I want to let people who are actually here to talk first. But we'll get to that. Any other comments from Joe?
I just would like to sign that before...
Another signature. That's 1380 now. Guess in the back, sir?
Yes, my name is Tom Stein. I live in Mylan, and I enjoy the Hudson River as much as a lot of the people do. And so, I was disturbed when I learned about this. I haven't heard the details of the plan. But I did do a little research, and what is in our favor that I haven't heard anything in remarks to is, first, there's the Waterfront Revitalization and Coastal Resource Act of 1981. And that has three criteria for coastal management programs. The first one is to promote the beneficial use of coastal resources. The second is to prevention of their impairment. And the third is the management of major activities substantially... Can't even read my own writing. ...affecting numerous resources. So, we have that in our favor to keep them from fencing off the river. Then, we have the Executive Law, Article 42 of the state, which requires a state environmental review act be amended to assure adequate consideration of coastal policies and to provide that the Secretary of State review the agency's action affecting achievement of coastal policies, of which the river is coastal. It's titled. We have the Waterfront Act of 1981 of inland waterway law that gives coastal management program authority to advocate for us to include promoting waterfront revitalization, promoting water-dependent use, protecting fish and wildlife habitats, protecting and enhancing scenic areas, protecting and enhancing historic areas, and most importantly, protecting and enhancing public access. And that is the Waterfront Act of 1981. I also researched the NTSB report for this section of track. And I've researched it for over the past 40 years. There has only been one incident in the last 40 years, and that was an employee... I don't know if it was an employee of CSX or Amtrak who was killed in Claremont, maintaining the railroad. Aside from that, there has been no civilian interaction with the railroad. So, I don't see the clause for this fencing. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add to the death reported of accidents. As per my experience down by the river, whenever an oncoming train ever came at one or my friends, we have always pulled off to let as far as we possibly could to avoid any altercation with the train or anything like that. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Through my 40-year association with the Village of Tivoli, I know for a good 20 years that the waterfront revitalization has been a long, ongoing process, which we did just successfully in the last few years able to purchase the property. Yes, sir. We're defended with our right to access the river from the 1840 Railroad Act, which took the right-of-way away from the villages if you had ferry and other access to the river, which Tivoli certainly does. I think some of the recent activities by Amtrak, like the storage of some of their supplies and stuff on the recently purchased Tivoli property, which you're aware of, shows a disregard for who's owning what and what's really going on down there. I think it's probably justified by their lawyers that this is about liability and high-speed train access, whereas the really most dangerous part of that would be the crossings themselves. Right? So, with the idea that there's no safe at-grade crossing in a 120 mile an hour train, these fences do nothing to protect or even to upgrade the crossing signals or anything else that has to do with the most potential danger, which is cars and trains interacting. Right? So, these fences, the way that I understand they're outlined, just keep people from walking on the other side of the tracks on their property at each one of these sections, although the German Town Landing is open, the Chevy is open. Landing is open. The Tivoli Landing is open. So, I'm afraid that it's more of a land grab than it is a liability and safety issue. But Amtrak's trying to establish the fact that no one has the right to access that property, and that would affect other long-term plans for the river, like ferry service from Ryan Cliff to Kingston, and maybe from Kingston to Tivoli and Tivoli to Sawyers. And it also does nothing effective[1478.81] And also does nothing effective that could stop people from accessing the same amount of property from the river. So this is solely a pedestrian and maybe automobile, using automobiles from the appeal of pedestrian. It's only aimed at those people accessing the road along paths. So I think it's with all of the expenses and all the troubles and the upgrades that Amtrak needs in their present situation, these fences must be one of the farthest things down the list of priorities.
We had a similar conversation earlier about that.
Yeah, so something has brought this to the top. And I think it's more of like, if you allow someone to walk across your property for seven years, they may have a right to say, hey, we've always been doing it. Well, that's what all of us are saying. We've been doing it for...
For longer than seven years.
Yeah, for much longer, from before the 1840 railroad era.
I imagine we could probably dig out some treaty documentation of indigenous populations being able to utilize the river, so...
Right, so it's absolutely preposterous that this is gonna be done, and I would like to echo my support for the fact that it's not being done with sufficient public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I want to read the letter from Joseph Barlaro. Uh, we're gonna put it in the record because I didn't tell him I would. Dear Mayor and Town Board, of course, we're a village, but we know what he means. Uh, I cannot make the town board meeting tonight. Let's get that word. Um, a request that you read this letter into the minutes of tonight's town board meeting, uh, March 21st, 2018, from Joseph Barlaro, owner of Northern Duchess Archery LLC, uh, South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. Uh, subject: Impasse Fence Proposal, Public Comment Period. I would like to state that I am against the impasse fence. If this proposal goes through, it would be extremely detrimental to my business and my personal use of the Hudson River. I own one of the two areas bait and tackle shops. Stripper season generates, uh, second-largest income for us. We supply the majority of bait and tackle to the fishermen who use these access points. Without it, I don't know if we could survive. Stripper fishing in the Hudson Valley is a multimillion-dollar fishery. We may not see it as so because it is spread out along many miles of the Hudson River, all the way to the dam in Albany. People come from all over the country, and I have met some from other countries who come here to fish the striper run. It's as big, if not bigger, than the salmon run in Pulaski each year. The trickle-down revenue affects many area businesses, such as delis, convenience stores, pizza shops, gas stations, even the local hardware store and auto parts, uh, where I send customers to buy the 12-volt batteries they need to power their live wells. It goes much further than just fishing, access, assess its access for all who want to enjoy our mighty river, one of the greatest natural resources in the Hudson Valley, one that I believe is very much taken for granted by those of us who live here and see it day to day. As our elected officials, I am asking you to please help find a way that all parties can come together to keep the access to the river open and safe. Your support on finding a compromise on this proposal is much needed. Thank you, Joseph Barlaro. Um, I also have here a letter from Sinek Hudson. Um, let me just sort of put this in some context. So the village of Tivoli was informed by the Department of State from Matthew Moraglio, a gentleman you referenced, um, on March 5th that, um, there was gonna be a public comment period from the 14th to the 28th. All the municipalities in this affected area have been talking with each other. I've spoken with Supervisor McKeon and Supervisor Spenzia, and also Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper. And I think everyone feels that what we got from Amtrak through Department of State was uh, not detailed, uh, even physically hard to look at, perhaps. Um, you know, we all got these, uh, aerial shots with some arrows. So, um, after lots of discussion among the board, we will definitely be sending a letter to, uh, Mr. Moraglio, uh, as part of this public comment period. Um, I will tell you what I intend to put in that letter so far, and one of the reasons, I have a few more days. I wanted to wait until tonight so I would hear more, uh, to make sure there wasn't anything that I was missing. I think the first big obvious thing is that we need a, a local presentation from Amtrak and Department of State. Come down here, let's walk down there, show me exactly where these gates are gonna go. Uh, we need a clear picture. I had been talking with, um, Department of State, you know, I said, 'cause I got something that's a, that's a picture from, from aerial view with two arrows. Says, you know, perpendicular gate north and south of Diana Street. Well, where exactly? And from that little, you know, uh, bit of information, it seems to me, and the written comments support this, that it's about vehicles at this point, and that, you know, they would keep cars from crossing Diana Street, getting on the access road, and going north to Chevyah and back and forth, right? It does seem, based on this, and I want confirmation on everything I'm saying now from them, uh, that a pedestrian could go anywhere. And while I'm at it, just as a devil's advocate, so to, to fish that whole stretch, you need to drive over there?
Mm-hmm.
Walking's not good enough?
Can we just stay on the liability end of walking? That, have you ever walked the service road on the west side of tracks? So we're talking two, three cop-inch diameter cobblestones, you know? So we're gonna go to the path of least resistance. I myself have walked down there many a times. I can tell you that I don't walk on that service road. I walk on the rails, I walk on the ties. It's the path of least resistance. You don't have to worry about breaking your ankle on a three-inch stone. It's on the, the access road. So if they're saying that they're gonna limit the vehicles, now when I go fishing, which my fishing spot is across from the Sawyer's Lighthouse, which is almost directly below Claremont State Park, you're talking from the Tivoli Crossing, that is a one-mile walk for me. If you've never been striper fishing, you entail a lot of gear. You're talking about a live well to keep your herring alive. Joe's talking about batteries to, to let these things run. You have a limit of three fishing poles. You have a scapping rig to catch your herring with. So it's, it's not a matter of the vehicle access. They're putting a huge liability on themselves letting people walk down there as opposed to driving your car, because as Brett said, every single time I'm driving north on the tracks and the train is coming, you stop and you move to the left. I don't wanna have a collision with a train. I know I'm gonna lose that battle. You know, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way. Just to throw six and stones, Bard College students are a major issue. Not only for the village of Tivoli, but now for our waterfront. Because I can tell you that we go down there and you're gonna say, how can you spend this much time down there? On an average striper fishing day for me, I drive through this village at four o'clock in the morning, and I don't drive back out until eight o'clock at night. In that time, I don't see one Bard College student. At my time of leaving eight o'clock at night until coming back at four o'clock the next morning, there's trash bags, there's grills, there's tractor parts that are left at our fishing spot. DJ used to work at UPS Building Materials over in Red Hook. We made a sign and posted it on a tree at our fishing spot. We put a garbage can there. Put your garbage in the can, we will remove the garbage. Every time we go down there, it's just a mess of stuff all over the place. So again, it's a contributing factor for Bard College students, the vehicles, which I understand, but they're, they're placing a bigger liability with foot traffic. They're gonna...
And to someone who doesn't know anything about striper fishing, it sounds like it's not really a pedestrian activity.
It's not a pedestrian activity.
You have too much extra equipment.
And enough to say, if you catch a sizable striper, and it's a keeper striper, I mean, you're talking a forty-inch fish. You cannot keep in between the twenty-eight and forty-inch fish. So if you're catching over a forty-inch fish, now you're talking a thirty to forty-pound fish.
It's a mile walk.
And I'm a mile up the river and I have to walk out. I, I just, you know, I've lived here my whole life. I've fished that river my whole life. My grandparents have lived here before any of us were ever born. They fished on that river. Who is Amtrak to tell us that they're gonna put a gate there? You know?
Alright, so I wanted to ask that, just, uh, for the fish.
True, if I'm wrong, too. I also think a side effect of it, you can also put your boat in and go striper fishing. If you don't allow some of these people down access that way, and they're not gonna go pay to charter fishing, you may encourage some people to surreptitiously try to launch their boats at the old Tivoli launch spot, which I don't think the village wants. But you're gonna have people like say, well, I can't walk down there. So you know what? I'm gonna go down there four o'clock in the morning and let them try to catch me. I'm putting my little car topper boat in there. I'm gonna put the little rowboat in there, put my electric motor on the back, and you're gonna have people trying to launch from the Tivoli boat launch, which existed a number of years ago.
Right, and also if you'll remember, three years ago when Bryan Cranham was mayor, I was just knew you were here, and I had to come in because there was a threat that we were gonna be ticketed for crossing the tracks over there. If you go on the DEC website and you look for fishing access points or boating access points, Tivoli is still listed on there as an access point for all of the above, vehicle, pedestrian, and boat launch. So, you know, just to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you. I wanna just, um, get through sort of my talking points for the letter, so, um, yes, they should come down and make a presentation to all of us. Uh, we need a very clear picture, you know, how, how high is your gate, what's it made of? Uh, where exactly are you asking to put it? Because right now I don't really have any of that information. You brought up, Steve, uh, right-of-way property lines trespassing. So we have in Tivoli already suffered from one Amtrak trespass. Um, about two years ago, they built a large electrical panel in the middle of the parcel that we bought from, uh, CSX in 2010. Uh, they clearly didn't know where the property lines were. Um, we spent about two years of engineers and attorneys and a couple thousand dollars, uh, fighting, dealing with that trespass. We got them to move it. It's now a little bit south of Diana Street. So we've got that little bit of trauma about trespassing, so that's another thing. Now, um, you know, they have a right-of-way. There may be certain things they, uh, will argue they can do in the right-of-way where it'll be more difficult, but certainly whatever they do needs to be entirely off of village, village land. Uh, similar with the storing of materials. So, um, you know, they're, they're doing a whole railroad tie project. Uh, I've heard from everyone on Friendship Street about creosote odors, and, uh, they did a year ago have dumpsters and, uh, material on our property. But again, we said, get that off. So, you know, they've moved it. So far, so good. But it's another reason that they should, when they have a presentation, show us the survey. Maybe it should all be, you know, pinned so everyone can see what's what.
If they put a fence on your property, it's gonna be a lot harder to get off.
Right, well, that's why I'm gonna make sure they don't get, you know. Uh, the other big concern, uh, that I have and our fire department has is, we all know that our fire department rescue squad does a lot of important lifesaving work down there. And whatever sort of fencing or gating the Department of State permits Amtrak to do, it cannot interfere with our ability to quickly launch a boat for the boating accidents, for the fire on Magellan Island, north or south. I mean, it needs to not affect emergency response. And whether that means that our fire department's gonna have a key or what, I'm not sure, but we need, we need those answers as well. And I had some concerns, sort of why I asked the question, if you make it hard to take a vehicle over there, are you gonna encourage more unsafe walking all around? So I think, um, that's pretty much, and then extending the comment period as well.
Absolutely.
So those are the issues I was gonna put in a letter from the village of Tivoli.
You could use unreasonable amount of time for comments.
And, um, so with that background, I wanna, um, I might not read the whole thing, but, uh, Sinek Hudson, um, and Riverkeeper circulated a letter, um, that I saw last night that they're sending up to Department of State, and, um, I'll just share it with you. Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper have received numerous phone calls and emails expressing opposition to Amtrak's proposal to install gates and/or fences along the railroad right-of-way in Rhinebeck, Rhine Cliff, Tivoli, Germantown, Stockport, and Stuyvesant. As longstanding proponents of expanding public access to the Hudson River, we share their concerns. And incidentally, Sinek Hudson gave Tivoli, uh, the money to buy that land, so they, they're concerned. Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper also strongly believe in the public's right to participate in the decision-making processes that affect community and individual quality of life. In this case, decisions that would reduce public access to the Hudson River and negatively impact view sheds. Not only is public participation in many instances required, it's simply a good idea because a collaborative planning process can result in practical solutions that resolve conflicts in ways that benefit all parties. Given the outpouring of public concern and the need for the public to participate meaningfully in this decision-making process, both Sinek Hudson and Riverkeeper believe that the fifteen-day public comment period is partial to the applicant's interests and insufficient for the affected stakeholders. So, a rush, one word.
Those are, yeah, those are good words.
Good words, yeah. I had to pause there, sorry. Just remember that. Partial to the applicant's interest. Fifteen days is simply not enough...
Those are probably legal words as well, yeah.
Fifteen days is simply not enough time to capture the public's concerns regarding the proposal's impact on the loss of river access and to view sheds. Public information provided by Amtrak to date is completely inadequate, making meaningful public comment impossible. Uh, I certainly feel, uh, unable to comment on even what they propose for Tivoli because I haven't seen it represented clearly in, in graphics. Additionally, we believe that the proposed gate and/or fence installations, while part of one application, have very different ramifications at each location, and as such, requires, uh, separate public meetings. Therefore, we request that the public information meetings be held in each municipality where gate and/or fence installations are proposed, Rhine Cliff, Germantown, Tivoli, Stockport, and Stuyvesant. Rail representatives must provide each community with the specific details of all proposed gates and/or fences and provide data to justify each project individually. I heard that comment from the, from the gentleman as well. You know, can it really be justified based on a history of incidents or whatnot? Uh, we also request that each meeting should be part of the official public record with a stenographer recording all public comments. Only upon the conclusion of the final community meeting should a thirty-day comment period begin. This would ensure that everyone interested in this issue has ample opportunity submit, to submit informed written comments to the Department of State. Thank you for your consideration, Jeffrey Ann Zavino, Director of Land News Advocacy, Sinek Hudson, John Litcomb, Patrol Boat Captain, Vice President for Advocacy, Riverkeeper Incorporated. So, um, thank you for coming and talking, and I'm sure you're gonna continue to follow this as it goes. Uh, I'll be sending off a letter from the village of Tivoli. Um, and I'm also gonna reference the turnout we had and the comments at this meeting. Uh, that'll go out, uh, well before the 28th, and I'll also be asking for, uh, you know, as I said, presentation, clear picture, that they understand the property lines, emergency services, emergency access, uh, and an extended comment period.
The way they use those words, it might be prejudiced in the applicant's favor. I think you might imply that the lack of clarity in the design details might indeed be intentional. So that everyone would assume, all the communities assume they're gonna get the same thing the other community gets, but there's no guarantee that the gates themselves would not vary, maybe in a negative way, community by community. Like the Germantown Landing, what are they gonna do with the people's access to their house there? You know, that's like, really crazy, because there's people that have real estate very close to this access.
Right, hopefully we'll be able to slow this down, open it up, and, and make it a real community decision. And, uh, you know, I think that, uh, as you already have, uh, this gentleman, Matthew Moraglio at Department of State, send him everything.
I'm sure he's about to sick and listen to that.
It's okay, it's okay.
He gets to me for it, right?
Do you have any information that this is happening any, thus farther south than Rhine Cliff?
Uh, no, the only information I've had is that, you know, this current proposal, and Sinek Hudson talks about how they're wrapping, you know, several different locations into one proposal, is Rhine Cliff to Stuyvesant.
Very interesting to me that it's not happening in Putnam County.
Well, the reason it's happened is, and I hate to keep referring to the striper fishing, but we are on the breeding grounds. And that's why it's from Rhine Cliff up to Stuyvesant, which is actually from Rhine Cliff up to the Albany Dam. That's the breeding grounds of these fish. This is where they come to spawn. The reason they're talking about vehicles is because that timeframe of April through June, I mean, there is a lot of vehicles down there, but it's, it's a great time. It's, it's an outdoorsman thing.
And have you had, there's been no accidents involving any vehicles and trains?
The, I just wanna, the, the last accident in Tivoli was actually 1985. And there were a couple of kids, I don't wanna go into, they were racing the train track, and that's the last noted incident in the village of Tivoli, was 1985.
That's what precipitated the actual crossing bars.
The crossing bars, because there were no crossing bars at that time. Thank you for your time. Hope you guys work with us in what we're trying to accomplish.
Of course, yes.
Nobody, the river is for all of us, you know?
Everybody.
And, and I think that, uh, the battle of the encrydes showed that, you know, waterfront communities can fight and win against really seemingly insurmountable odds. But then we, I think we have more investment in, in it, so...
Going off the lines of fishing, you know, kayakers, have you ever been kayaking? Have you ever went down the river and then had the tide start going out and you had to come back? So what did you do? You pull your kayak onto the service road, you go and get your vehicle, and you come and pick up your kayak. If you've never been stuck the wrong way on a tide, you don't wanna be stuck the wrong way on a tide. So appearing from the fishing, that's another reason to have that access road down.
Also, animals too. They put up a fence along the whole, the whole way. What about the wildlife?
Well, that's why they're supposed to have a seeker app, you know?
Right, so this, this is going through seeker overseen by the Department of State?
Yes. There's, there's many reasons why it shouldn't happen, not just the fishing.
And, um, when, uh, I have the Tivoli letter prepared and stuff, I'll make that public. And I don't know what the best way to do that is, send it to Joe? Send it to you?
Probably Joe, or Emily can put it on Tivoli Neighbors on Facebook.
Okay.
That's how we're actually doing it.
So if, if we do that, that'll be adequate, just so you all know what we did?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any more comments on, uh, Amtrak gating and fencing? Any public comments on any other topic that you would like to discuss? Oh, just a second.
Hey, Tom.
Mr. Christie.
I have to see your work, myself.
We were just about to, uh, close the public comment period, but maybe you have...
Do you have any comment on Amtrak notices?
Do I have on access?
No, as long as they give the fire department access up and down that, that thing, that's not really anything we can do anything about.
But emergency access is critical.
There's no choice.
Yeah.
Because if we have to, you know, sure they'll give us a key if we don't.
Right.
We have our own keys.
Right. Good answer.
And when you talk about those kind of keys, you're not the only person that has those kind of keys. You are. That's the other big negative about what they're not planning for. And to comment about the trash and other people littering, by putting a gate up, you're gonna refuse access to some of the people who care the most about it, about it, of the conservationists, and leave it to people who are gonna go, geez, the gate's there, and the gate's there. Why don't I cross in the middle? How long is it gonna take for everybody to figure that out? It's a waste of money and it's completely ineffective, and if anything, it's dangerous.
I, I believe they just don't want the cars up and down the tracks. They're not really gonna act, they're not gonna put a fence all the way up the whole thing.
Right.
Still gonna be able to cross the tracks, which can be a little dangerous. You know, being, we've been in that situation before, you know, working fires, and all of a sudden you got a ninety mile an hour train coming around the turn, and it gets there on top of you pretty quick. But, um, I mean, it's their property.
So, um...
It's hard to, you know, I see it. I've seen, years ago, I seen a car get wobbled by a train, three people die.
Eighty-five.
You know, whenever that was, yeah, and to me, it happened five seconds ago. I mean, I can remember everything, it just doesn't go away. So is it a good idea? They're not stopping you from using the Tivoli point, it's...
I'm gonna switch topics just a little bit, and if anyone has other comments, but I wanna tell, uh, everyone who I know is watching out there, uh, our garbage can law is, is in effect now, and, uh, we've seen some pretty decent compliance so far, but, uh, we've sort of gone through a, a little warning period, and now we're gonna get into the ticketing period. So that, unfortunately, you know, we, we want everyone to know, whatever your garbage day is, if you use Welsh or Waste Management or whoever, you can put it out. Six p.m. the night before, you gotta take it back in by 10 p.m. the day of your collection. And if it's out, the rest of the week, on the sidewalk, in your front yard, uh, in the road, um, we will get an appearance ticket and, and be looking at a fifty-dollar fine in village court. So, uh, we don't wanna have to ticket or find anyone, but, uh, we do need those cans to get pulled back. We need, uh, we need the sidewalks clear and the streets clear and safe, so please, uh, help us out, cooperate. And, uh, for those who care, it's, it's about pride in the village too, and then not putting our trash out in front of our, everything else that's nice about this community, so, um, that's all I have. Trustees, anything else?
Just egg hunt.
Egg hunt.
Egg hunt.
Bring the kids.
Bring the kids, eat some cake, sugar melts, something like that.
Uh, any other comments from the public before we adjourn, gentlemen?
Oh, uh, yeah, uh, there's no burning. The New York State law is in effect until May 14th or 15th, whatever day it is, the last, there's no open burn at all.
Okay.
Don't wanna get caught in that.
Alright, no open burning till May?
May 15th, I believe. Fourteenth is the last day, so 15th. But then again, whatever all the news are, in the village.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Okay, it's, uh, 7:49. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Joel Weinberg?
Oh, I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.